This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We're reconvening from executive session and as always, we're going to start with a prayer and the pledge. And Mr. Sterling, I think it's your turn.
Let us bow. Father, we come this evening with humble submission to your will. We thank you for the blessings, life, health and strength that you give us each and every day. We are grateful for the Tyler Independent School District, its administrative team, faculty, staff, board members, citizens of Tyler, and above all, the students that enter onto our campuses each day. We ask that you guide, protect the staff and students, as well as provide instructional knowledge, patience, wisdom, and above all, loving care to those that interact with students of TISD each day. We ask that you keep our schools and communities safe daily from hurt, harm, or danger, as well as all schools and cities in our nation. And now, Father, we ask that you be in the midst of this meeting in order for us to interact positively when discussing and making decisions that will impact the Tyler Independent School District and its citizens. Finally, when we depart from this place, give us all traveling grace to return safely to our homes and destinations. In his mighty and precious name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to TISD, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Sterling. First time in six years, somebody different from your district has done that. It's good to hear and it's an honor to do it. It's one of my favorite things to do as a board member. Coming out of executive session, we do have a couple of items to take action on. The first item A is approving the hiring of interim superintendent. And I believe Mr. Wallace Stewart Byrd is our man.
Mr. President, I move-
Interim Assistant Superintendent.
That's an important assistant.
You know, interim assistant superintendent. It's okay, Marty.
He can do it.
Yeah, he's been there, right? All right.
I move that we hire Mr. Wallace Stewart Byrd as interim assistant superintendent.
Okay, have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion passes 7-0.
Appreciate it. Mr. Byrd could not make it tonight. He had a prior commitment with a grandson in Houston. A lot of y'all know Mr. Byrd, former superintendent at Troop in Jacksonville, was also high school principal at Jacksonville High School and Carthage High School. He's going to come in in an interim phase and assist us where we need support. So appreciate y'all voting on him and welcome him to the school system and y'all get to meet him as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Crawford. I'm sure he'll do a great job. We also have item B, which is considering renewals and non-renewals of contract abandonment and terminations and contracts for professional personnel, including possible action to propose termination of the Chapter 21 Probationary Employment Contract of Myra Escobedo. Do I have a motion for possible action to propose termination there?
Mr. President, I move that we propose termination of the Chapter 21 Probationary Employment Contract of Ms. Myra Escobedo.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, as have it, and motion carries 7-0. And that's the only thing we had action on coming out of executive session. So we're moving on to the approval of minutes for board workshop September 5th and the regular meeting September 16th and board workshop of September 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes for September the 5th, 16th, and the 23rd.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Martinez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. We are now to the point in our meeting for special recognitions.
Okay, good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford.
Good evening.
Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our October District Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Maya Johnson, a third grade student at Pete Elementary School, and the Secondary Student of the Month is Anisa Sadio, an eighth grade student at Moore MST Magnet School. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on 12 Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. These qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. We would like to recognize Maya Johnson, a third grade student at Pete Elementary School, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Maya exhibits Tyler ISD's learner profile characteristics by being a goal setter and a lifelong learner. She enjoys being a Pete Wildcat and lives by her Wildcat words in everything she does.
You get to learn a lot of new things and you also get to, you also get to do really cool things.
Maya explains how the learner profile attribute of goal setting applies to her third grade classes.
Setting goals mean like you're setting goals to go to college or somewhere. One of my goals is to model good and support good. And my other goal is to support. Support means to like, if like somebody gets an award, you have to like cheer for them.
Our secondary student of the month is Anisa Sadio, an eighth grade student at Moore MST Magnet School. Of the district's many learner profile characteristics, Anisa is a goal setter with a heart to contribute to society. Anisa's story takes us back to earlier years of her childhood when she was faced with a rare form of cancer. This life challenge hasn't held this Mustang back from setting a goal to raise awareness about the reality of childhood cancer.
When I was little, I was six years old, and I was diagnosed with Ewing's sarcoma, which is a type of cancer. And September is childhood cancer awareness month, and so I wanted to do something for September since I fall in the category of childhood cancer. I've been wanting to do this ever since I was diagnosed because I didn't know kids could get cancer. I thought it was just adults.
Through persistence, determination, and a well-written letter to Moore Principal Claude Lane, Anisa and the Moore Mustang family were able to raise in one day more than $1,000 for children impacted by cancer.
Mr. Lane came and announced that we were so close to getting $1,000, and a lot of kids stood up, and that made me like emotional and I was crying and everything.
And dealing with a life event such as pediatric cancer has helped Anisa decide what she wants to be when she grows up.
I want to work, I want to work in the hospitals with the kids that are going through cancer so I can tell them like about my story and tell them, you're going to make it, like, you got this, basically.
In Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and in life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and display of the Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Krista's Trinity Mother Frances Health System.
Board members, I'd like to introduce you to Maya Johnson, our Elementary Student of the Month. Ms. Maya? (applause) achievements through the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of the 1.6 million entrants, only an approximate 50,000 students with the highest PSAT scores qualify for recognition. Congratulations to National Merit Commended Students Ariel Hecker and Tyler Purrier and National Merit semifinalist Inara Tajani and Omar El Kishki. College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program. These students scored in the top 2.5% among Hispanic and Latino PSAT test takers in the region. Congratulations to Kevin Moharo from Early College High School and Anthony Valideras from Robert E. Lee High School. Okay, congratulations to the Hubbard Middle School Symphonic Band for being named a commended winner in the 2019 Mark of Excellence National Win Band Honors Project. This places the Husky Band among the top middle school programs in the United States, and this is the first time that a band from Tyler ISD has received this honor. The Husky Symphonic Band is directed by Michael Oglesby. Mr. Munkata is an outstanding math teacher at John Tyler High School and is excelling in classroom management and instruction among many other areas. Mr. Munkata, would you come forward? And finally, Tyler ISD is proud to recognize Michael Barnett, chief appraiser for the Smith County Appraisal District, for his dedication and commitment to the Tyler Independent School District. Mr. Barnett?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. He's retiring, that's why we're doing this. (laughter)
Well, it's good to have a full slate of recognitions. Yes, Ms. Mason would like to say something.
Mr. Barnett. Mr. Barnett, I just wanted everyone to know what an outstanding gentleman you are. I don't know of anyone who loves appraisal district business like Mr. Michael Barnett. I really don't know of anyone who knows it like you know it. You are outstanding, and I just want to say how proud I am to serve on your board, and we're going to truly miss your dedication. Thank you.
I want to share a comment. Tyler ISD points three of our members of the seven member board. I've been there now, I'm just a month shy, 37 years, come the end of December, and the leadership, the board, we have the best board, the directorate, 254 appraisal districts in Texas, and you have enabled me to be successful because you've been so diligent in making sure that you have outstanding board members giving guidance to the appraisal district. So I owe you a great deal of thanks and appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, good to have a full slate there to celebrate successful student outcomes and community outcomes. Okay, we are moving on to our continuous improvement portion of our meeting, and we have an update from the Mentoring Alliance. Kevin East.
As Mr. East comes to the podium, I'm very proud to have them provide their annual reports. It's an outstanding partnership that we have with Mentoring Alliance. He'll talk about the three components of Mentoring Alliance, Gospel Village, Boys and Girls Club of East Texas. Is that still your title? Is that still the name of the org? Okay. And certainly my favorite, Rose City Summer Camp. So, Mr. East, why don't you provide your annual report to this board?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford and President Washman. The whole board, as a parent of five kids in TISD, I'm grateful as well for this board. I just, I'm really grateful to have people like y'all serving the community like this. I want to give you a quick update today. Many of y'all know of this organization here in town. We are fighting on behalf of all kids and families with the belief that God has created each of us uniquely and we are all of immense worth and value, and so we're all worth fighting for. And so, we have three different programs within the Mentoring Alliance. As Dr. Crawford said, many of y'all know about these. The Boys and Girls Clubs of East Texas, as of today, we have right at 1,350 kids a day right now involved in 21 different locations of Boys and Girls Clubs. We have a bunch of different locations, 21 different locations. We added, we opened this year Pete Bonner Jones in Three Lakes to all open Boys and Girls Clubs at those locations. The great thing about those locations is they, kids pay as little as $5 a week to be involved in the after-school programs there, and many, many people in this community and beyond support what's happening in this community because they're excited about it. I was just in Houston late last week, meeting with two different people who were just amazed at the partnership we have at the school district here and how we're able to work on behalf of student outcomes the way that we do, and so I appreciate that with y'all. Some different kids you'll see. By the way, our goal is to get to 1,450 kids this year. Like I said, we're at 1,350 today. We expect that number to rise and well surpass 1,450 kids a day by about the March timeframe. We're well ahead of where we were last year at this time. We have a lot of great staff, loving kids each and every afternoon, helping them get their homework done. This is a picture, I believe, at Three Lakes. It could be Bolter, but that's Abigail who oversees our two different middle school club programs, as we like to call them, and the kids they're in. So over there at Bolter, we have a guy named Q there with his back to us, who's part of our staff, loving kids over there each and every afternoon, which is great. Different locations, we pride ourselves on our staff because we believe our staff is our program. So we hire great college students. We have some retired teachers that work for us, and even some teachers in the TISD who want to work within Boys and Girls Clubs after school, hang around and do that. We love pictures like this where kids after school are getting involved in books, especially if you know some of these kids personally, it becomes great pictures and you know some of the behind-the-scenes stories of kids that slow down long enough to get involved in books. Rose City Summer Camps, this past summer, we had two locations, again at Three Lakes and at Moore. We had about 600 campers a day capacity. As many of y'all know, we're opening two more locations this next summer. We're really excited about opening up a location at Hubbard and a location at Bolter. We're putting together a lot of creative ideas about what we can do with some of the kids in our community that we know that will never have access to certain activities, so we're getting creative in the programming to make sure that each of the locations is unique and extremely impactful for the kids coming to that location. And so, all the locations will have about one counselor per eight campers, about one staff person per five campers, so we keep a very low staff-to-child ratio. Kids pay as little as $25 a week to come to Rose City Summer Camps, and even in some scenarios, we scholarship them fully based on need at times as well. And so, we're excited. We think that we're, along with TISD, writing an example that many people in other communities are calling me about already, saying, "How is this going on? What's going on here and how can we learn from this?" We had superintendents, as Dr. Crawford knows, this summer from the New Braunfels area and Comal, I think it's called, school districts, come up to see Rose City Summer Camps and talking about how they can emulate that in their community as well. So we think it's a really fascinating partnership that's being unfolded here. You see some of the pictures in Rose City. There's a lot of fun singing, craziness with kids. It's camp and it's in schools. One of the best components, we asked many campers this summer, "What was your favorite part?", and too many kids said the academics. I don't get that. That's not supposed to be their favorite part. It's camp, right? But the teachers here in TISD, we had some phenomenal teachers within Rose City Summer Camps, getting very creative in their time instructing the kids and just did a great job. Same time, our staff, loving kids, meeting them there where they are. Guys like Q here, mentoring this young man Malik in Rose City Summer Camps as well. It's just a cool opportunity that we have. Lot of inflatables. It's hot in East Texas. The key is water. You put anything water on it, it's going to be more fun. That's kind of what we do in Rose City Summer Camps. Lastly, Gospel Village. Y'all know this is our partnership. We get churches involved and mentoring kids in this community. Some of y'all there on the board I know are mentors within Gospel Village. We have young people, young college students, like this one mentoring kids. We have grown men, like this man Jim Nip, who's a president of a company, mentoring a young man here in our community as well. Other people that just say, you know, "I can get involved in this." At all different levels, we have surprisingly about half male mentors, half female mentors. I know President Washman, you became a mentor here recently, we made a cool video on you as well, but just great to see the church stepping into this space here in this community. So I'm familiar with that. I think you as well are mentoring. Thank you for doing that here in this community. It's a great impact. Oh, and then guys like pediatricians here in town, Dr. Rick Rogers even go play video games at times with this boy London, who he's been mentoring for years. It's quite fascinating to talk about his experience as a mentor. So all of the community, people stepping up to mentor kids in this community that really can benefit from that experience. I'm going to call up a guy, Dr. Paul Penley's in town. We hire a company from Colorado each year to measure outcomes within the Mentoring Alliance. He's here going to just mention just a few of them. We're just getting some of these outcome measurements in, and so we're kind of in the middle of looking at them ourselves, but Dr. Paul Penley can tell you more about what we're seeing within the impact here of our three programs.
Yeah, the water slides at Rose City Summer Camp look pretty fun, but I'm going to direct you to some of the bar graphs that I've put together on a printout that you'll have in front of you. Some of these you'll see upon the screen as well. One of the things that was introduced at Rose City a couple summers ago is the reading intervention, where students are being screened to see where they're at, if they're behind in reading. There's emphasis here in the district, as I understand it, for, you know, that K through second, trying to get folks on reading at their grade level by the time they're in third grade. And so, those students who are behind are targeted and invited into this one-on-two, one-on-three, one-on-four kind of intense style, small group tutoring to see if they can't make good strides back towards where the kids should be on the proper reading level. And so, a number of students were selected to participate in this focused program this last summer, and you've got two graphs here that look at their progress over the summer in two different ways. So on the left, we're looking at total growth from where the kids started, and the percentage is the percentage of a year's worth of reading proficiency. There's a particular instrument that's being used here, Fountain and Pinnell. We don't need to get into all the letters and details related to that. But what's seen essentially this year is the kids coming in were almost, on average, who were coming into this reading intensive, almost a year's worth of reading proficiency behind where they should be to get up to their grade level. And so, that was about 91% of a year. And so, on average, the kids made up 81% of what they needed to do if they stuck around for the majority of camp. So if they're there the six to 10 weeks, and so you can see it move up as they stick around longer and get the assistance that they need. Essentially, when you look at the average of the whole entire group, if they stayed for two weeks or eight weeks, you get almost a month's worth of reading proficiency for each week that you're at camp getting this intensive tutoring. If you switch to the right side there and you look at the bar chart with two bars talking about, did they catch up to their grade level? And so, when we looked at all the kids here, where they were at, where they needed to be, just about half, this is a little more than last summer, they caught up to where, you know, so we have got someone reading on a second grade level, it was a third grader, and so now, by the end of camp, half of the kids who went into the reading intensive would have jumped up to be where they needed to be, you know? So this is, you know, one of the two kids, if you had visited Rose City Summer Camps, you would have been able to look out over to that group at that particular time of the the day and you could have confidence that, hey, one of those two kids is going to be exactly where the teachers want them to be, starting in the fall. To switch down to the summer learning loss, many of us are familiar, this is the big problem, is everything we taught you the last couple months in school, we got to reteach you in the first couple months of the next school year. And so, how do we, how do, how do we avoid that? Especially if someone ends the year behind and then ends up even further behind through the course of the summer. So, we gathered the test scores there, where the kids were at, at the end of the school year and then at the beginning of this school year, the 2019, 2020 school year. For all those kids in the TISD district that went to summer camp, tried to benchmark them against their peers. So, we gathered this data to see the average, the average loss in math and reading is what you see in green and bronze over there on the left side, the TISD peers. So, this is what's happening in the same schools in TISD where the summer campers went. And what ends up happening when you go and you look at, okay, well, if you compare that to everyone who went to camp for multiple weeks, we've excluded the one-weekers, the people just stopping by quick, but those who are getting more of a sufficient dosage where it makes sense to measure effect, academic impact. And so, whether it was two to eight weeks or nine to ten weeks, you can see the loss in reading and math beginning to be erased more and more, so much so that when a kid was there for nine to ten weeks or basically came for just about all of summer camp, it eliminated seventy-five percent of the typical math and reading summer learning loss for kids in this district. So, it continues the show. I mean, all the effort, the money, the things that are being put into it, I've, I've heard some of the numbers in terms of what TISD commits to make that happen and, and it's worth it. I know some have gotten pretty excited about the reading intensive results and thought, "Well, let's just focus more on that," you know, you know, instead of just, instead of as well on the classes related to math and stuff that the teachers are teaching to the entire summer camp population, but the results are there for both. You know, we've got sixty-three percent of the kids telling us, you know, that have come for a few weeks of camp, "Man, I feel well-prepared for school next year." And so, these aren't just their feelings, it's coming through as facts in the, in the math scores as well. So, that's the focus on Rose City. Let me give you just a, a couple other highlights from the other programs. Won't go into the fact that the, the Boys and Girls Club kids continue to stay a step ahead of their peers when it comes to their growth during a school year with, with their math and reading proficiency scores. But I wanted to focus on something we haven't done in the previous years, which is on what's described as the intangibles here, which is it's one thing that, you know, a, a test score is easy to get your hands around. What some of the harder stuff is, you know, things that exhibit themselves as, as anger and frustration and become discipline issues, the inability, or, or a kid giving up and backing out and not doing their homework and not trying to learn in the classroom. And how do you go after some of those issues which hinder the educational process? And that is certainly something that the Mentoring Alliance gets at. We spend time measuring, you know, effect on character, on emotional resilience. I mean, certainly all of you as, as school board members are familiar with social, emotional learning and these, these, these certain intangible skills that are essential for everything else to work in the educational process. And so, we've measured some of those things. You see here on the left from the Boys and Girls Club, is we've asked parents, "Tell us about your child, what they were like, what they were doing, how they're handling their emotions, how they're handling their homework before starting to go to Boys and Girls Club consistently and then after." And so, that's the source of this data in front of you, is where you've got, you, you, you've got the parents going, "Man, you know, less than half of us have our kids getting their homework done on time before we have to start nagging them." You know, what parent doesn't love when a child completes all of their homework without having to go through the hubbub and the checks and the questions and, 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 and the deflections? And so, you see this, you know, twice as many kids now, this number doubles, once kids join Boys and Girls Club are now coming home and mom and dad. This is why in, in structured interviews with parents of kids who goes to Boys and Girls Club, they've communicated to me in some of our qualitative research, you know, they're, they're so excited, they're smiling and you wonder why. And some of these numbers is what's coming through. They're getting their homework done. And then you see on the right there in blue, that you've got almost a fifty percent jump here, or growth in terms of the number of kids who parents are now seeing being able to resolve conflicts instead of just escalating conflict, beginning to find ways to communicate emotions, work towards forgiveness or a resolution, absolutely essential. You see on the right there, the Gospel Village emblem. And so, here we're doing the same thing for kids who have had a mentor for one, two, three or more years. How are they different than where they started? And we go back inside the home to ask the parents. We collect feedback to, to validate this from both mentors and the students themselves and match that with also what's being reported by the parents, so that there's no bias from any one perspective. And in the midst of that, what we found here is, you know, the, the confidence that a kid has skyrockets, right? Our, our best explanation as researchers on this is that, you know, it's the power of a loving adult seeking out a child, saying, "You're important," saying, "You can do something," saying, "I see you." And all of a sudden, their confident level goes up, which is essential for overcoming challenges that you face academically and beyond. You see the same thing with the number of kids who are able to control their anger over time from before having a mentor to after doubles. You know, an essential skill to be able to go, "I am angry, but I'm not going to lash out and go hurt someone else in the midst of it. I have another way to be able to communicate it, process it, et cetera," because of the influence of someone who loves me, cares for me and asks me how I'm feeling. The final screen to look at here related to Gospel Village, we don't look at test scores for Gospel Village because the students, many of them have a variety of different reasons why they've been put into that program. And so, they've got kind of a long way to go, oftentimes emotionally and their character, behaviorally, before they can get to a spot, get into a consistent place where they're learning at the same pace as their peers. But what we do see before, even though we're not going to look at test scores, is where we do expect some of that early character work, work to show up. And where it has shown up is in these studies we've done of looking at the reduction in number of times getting in trouble at school, skipping school. And on average, we've actually seen this for four years now, where the average kid who gets a mentor ends up essentially getting a half-letter grade bump. And, and this is, you know, not necessarily because a mentor makes you have greater intellectual capacity or translates into you getting higher scores on proficiency tests, but it has to do with more of that grit of staying on your homework, of pressing through, of not giving up and that kind of personal support that's received in the context of that relationship. So, happy to take any questions if any of the numbers don't make sense, but wanted to give you some, some concrete highlights of how the, the programs work their way out in terms of what we're measuring the lives of these kids.
Does anybody have any questions? Any comments?
Just one comment. My course for the last few years has been, "How do you do more?" And this is the first time that you're coming here with a plan to do significantly more. So, thank you for being creative. Thank you for galvanizing our community and engaging all sorts of families in the lives of these kids. It's making a huge difference.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for not, you know, you're always finding something new and something innovative in ways to challenge yourselves on what you do. So, many times, it seems like organizations kind of get, get in a rut and y'all don't do that. And there's so many needs out there, you're always looking for a way to meet them in a different way and a different way to measure it. And I just think you do a great job. We appreciate you being a part of the district.
Thank you.
Well, you know how much I love your ministry? I'm inspired by it. I think America needs more of this. I think it is, not only does it help us have successful student outcomes academically, but it helps our community bridge gaps generationally and in other ways. And it is vital to me, to the success of America, to, to have this type of mentoring going on. And so, I love that right here where we are in Tyler, Texas, I, I don't think we started it by any means, but you guys are showing people the way to do it. And so, if you ever need any, any help, if ever any school districts call and they need a reference or, just have them reach out to me or.
Wade's happy to do another video or two.
Yeah. Shaved.
He'll do something, yeah. Next time he's got a shave for, but I appreciate it.
Anyway, we appreciate all the work you do here in Tyler, ISD. And you have a luncheon tomorrow.
We've got a big luncheon tomorrow. Continue to cast a vision for the community, asking more and more people to get involved. That's the hope for tomorrow. So, we're going to set up people like y'all that are mentoring and being the example to follow that hopefully other people will join in, so.
If, if more people would be like I was five years ago and not tell Kevin, ever, never tell Kevin no. I don't think I have yet, have I?
No, not yet.
No. We've got big plans for Bolter. Bolter's going to look different than the other three sites. And we've already met on that. You might ask me how it looks different. It's going to be prescriptive. We're going to recruit kids to come, obviously, possibly provide transportation. We realize that part of our city has a difficult time with that. That summer learning experience is going to look different on top of the academics. Great time to utilize our aquatic center and learn to swim program there throughout the summer. We talked about that. Opportunity to go to SMU, go to the George Bush, George W. H. Bush, or George W. Bush Presidential Library, maybe go to Austin, the LBJ Library, certainly the Bob Bullock Museum as well. So, we're talking about some, some major field tripping that'll go along with some of this as well and really make that a, a model of what we want this to do. We've talked about a thousand kids this summer, is that correct, Kevin?
Just under, about a little over nine hundred.
We're going to try to get to a thousand students.
We're going to pack it in.
There you go.
The key is summer staff. It's just, we can be praying for that, hiring a lot of great summer staff, both in Tyler and from outside of Tyler, to move to Tyler. That's the challenge, but, but we're up for it, so.
Yeah, and kudos, kudos to Matt Schaefer locally for, for his work during the legislative session to make sure that we could do things like this with the 501(c)(3) for our summer experiences and Chairman Huberty as well, who, you know, authored the House Bill III. So, being able to access those and partner with a 501(c)(3) like Mentoring Alliance to be able to provide these experiences for our kids is important. The academics is extremely important, but just as imperative is the, is their, is the, is their hearts and our hearts. Gosh, it makes a difference in our hearts, too, so.
Do either of y'all see a difference in the learning when you're not faced with a high-stakes test, as a teacher and as a student? I was curious about that, watching the video. Seems like maybe kids are having fun learning, maybe because there isn't so much pressure on them in the summers? Have we seen that yet?
You know, it's funny, Andy, this, Dr. Crawford's seen this, when we're talking to kids at camp amidst the tours, we're inviting people in the community to come see this. They're like, "What's your favorite part of camp?" And over and over again, they say the academics. You walk by the classrooms, what the teachers are doing, they're like, "This is why I got into teaching." Like, they're loving it because the district has set a curriculum that's really effective and it gives them a lot of freedom within the curriculum, so the, the teachers are just having fun. There's multiple teachers in the same classroom with counselors acting as teachers aides. There's a lot of adults in each classroom with the kids. So, the whole environment just changes where it's, like we've laughed and we said, "We've got summer school hidden in the middle of summer camp." And so, you know, when you read studies about what do you need to do to get kids involved and to learn, it's, it's, it can't be forced, it's, it's got to be something they want to be a part of, but in order to want to be a part of it, it's got to be fun. So, there's that balance that we're constantly weighing with Rose City is like, "Okay, we want to have academics, but if it gets too much, then it begins to feel like if we're not careful, I'm in school all day." Even though camp is in school, it's, I mean, you know, it's, it's school, but it's camp.
And the data, the data's coming back that just two hours of instruction will keep, will help you maintain. And that's what we're really looking for, is to not ha, not have that summer sly, that's such a cliche thing, but truly that's what it is and the data doesn't lie. And I think that's the most important part of it. It's not an eight-hour rigorous day, like very structured day like we have now, but just, just a little dose of it, a couple hours a day, five days a week for ten weeks can make the difference in that, plus under the, the camp environment, it's pretty good. And don't discount his, his camp staff being able to get in the classrooms with us. You know, I wish we could afford that type of structure in every one of our classrooms. It's just not the way that we're able to, to fund ourselves, but that, that, that is a huge benefit for us and the more kids we can get to participate in the summer, the better. And TEA, there, there's actually grant dollars now that we're, we're investigating about some year-round opportunities at some of our campuses. So, that might be coming down the pike as well. We've talked about that before, this board has, as we've gone through this the last three years. And I really think it's on the horizon. We can fund that type of stuff and I've already kind of mentioned it to Kevin, that we could partner with them from the Boys and Girls Club end to make that year-round opportunity a real, a real thing for us, not just talk about it. So, maybe a year or two from now, I think we can get there.
I will say lastly about Dr. Hanson and team, Dr. Wells and others that put together this staff, the teachers that teach within Rose City are like the teachers of the year at multiple school locations. I mean, these are like phenomenal teachers that are just making it so incredibly fun and they're like recruiting other phenomenal teachers. And so, honestly, having tried it without TISD teachers to do camp and to do some level of academics and it was terrible, and then to partner with the district and to see where it is today as it's grown, we've not been the only ones to innovate. The district has really done a great job of trying new things, hiring different types of teachers that can really thrive in a camp setting, setting up different types of curriculum. I mean, it's really been kind of a, both of us learning at the same time. And here we are, five years into Rose City Summer Camps, and it's really getting something to be really proud of now, where it's like, "Man, this thing can be reproducible, not just in this community, but in other communities now as well."
One thing I, well, a couple of things I've noticed in, as we visit during the summer is that you're addressing the different learning styles. The students are actively engaged, you know, just sitting at a desk. And then the other thing, we teach all the time at the college level, you're addressing the multiple intelligences and that's very important. And when you see students up moving about and engaged with one another, interacting, they can't help but enjoy what they're doing.
That's right. And we're providing, we have some new staff as teachers now in TISD that were former Rose City Summer Camp staff that at times are like, "Hey, Dr. Crawford, let me introduce you to this young person right here." I mean, they're moving from, graduated Ole Miss, moved from Mississippi to Tyler, teaches music at one of the schools here now. Multiple staff now that want to be a part of this district because they see a district thinking so creatively about this as well. So, it's one of my goals, I told Dr. Crawford, is we want to supply great teachers to this district, so.
He just brings that up because when he steals one of your employees, he tries to say, "Well, I give you one back."
I give that four back.
Rock star art teacher that's now your media guy. We couldn't lose him.
I'm just, I bet, four to one, four to one.
Don't bring that up and try to make it, act like, that's, I mean, I'm very appreciative of that and those are rock stars you're giving us, but you can't use that and say, "Hey, we're giving you those back in return." Every time you steal somebody.
Be a little bit awkward up here now.
Yeah, what do you have to say for yourself now?
Nothing. I'm done talking at this point.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate you guys.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Okay, we also have under continuous improvement, some MAP, Boy K, uh, boy, beginning of the year K through three results. It's an acronym, it's all caps, you know.
Yes, part of some girl data, too.
It's part of your govern, governance calendar. This is the actual presentation, the beginning of the year academic results for your, your MAP, which is a, we give the MAP test three year, three times, three years at a time, three times a, a year, beginning, middle and end. It is nationally normed and as I was reminded today, those nationally normed tests are moving targets and they're never, they're never static. So, we're here to provide some, I think, some pretty good information for you tonight that since we've started MAP, this might be the best performance that we had at the beginning of the year. I don't know, Dr. Hanson and Dr. Kurden, it's your show.
Okay. This is always a mystery to me. Oh, there we go. So, and just a reminder about the goal one, which is seventy-nine percent of third-grade students will be reading at grade level RIT by spring of 2020. So, this is essentially where we are with that percentage as compared to, it says twenty, twenty twenty, so it would be the spring, spring of last year versus spring of, is that, is that, okay. So, and we had a little bump in Kinder and all the grades and then little decline in first grade. We obviously have addressed a lot of that through our foundational skills work, that And we obviously have addressed a lot of that through our foundational skills work, that tier one instruction. So, we feel really confident about, about improving there. And then our progress measures have to do with, um, students on grade level, of course. So, these are the percentage of students who, um, I'm looking at this one, James, so, oh yeah. The, yeah, these are the percentage of students who are on grade level, whereas this is the, the, I'm, oh jeez, this is just a mess. Help me. Okay. Yeah. I was looking, I was trying to get back to that other one so that we could look. Okay. So, these are the ones on grade level. And this, what I wanted to let you look at are the cohorts, because tho, that's really the exciting news. So, the, if you look at first grade, thirty-five percent of the students were on grade level last year at this time, and forty-three percent were on grade level this year. So, the kindergartners versus first grade. So, we have more kids coming into school, starting school on grade level, and that, that is, that is good news. So, that, uh, we, we feel really good about getting some improvement in that area, and that, and that helps us know whether we're getting those kids to proficient reading levels. Trying to see if that's gonna help me or not. So, I'm gonna let you go through some of this, James.
So, this is just showing, uh, where we began the year last year with 2018-19 MAP, um, versus where we were at this year, so in the 2019-2020 MAP. That's the percent of students that are on grade level at the beginning of the year, and we put in the middle, between those two columns, what we, we put the end of the year STAR score. So, you could kinda see where did we start the year, how do we finish on STAR, and then where are we at now relative to that? And so, you can see on the right-hand side where we're at this year. For the math data, you can see how the cohorts fared. Again, uh, the 2018-19 on grade level column indicates the percent, um, of students on grade level last year. So, for example, our current first graders, as kindergartners last year, only thirty percent of those students entered the year on, on grade level. This year, as first graders, forty-three percent of them are entering the year on grade level in math. So, it's a thirteen percent jump year over year. For every, in math, for every grade, we actually saw that our cohort gains, thirteen percent, were, that was actually as big or bigger than what we had last year. So, it's not just that we're bringing more students in on grade level, it's that we're bringing them in at a slightly higher rate than we did in prior years. Again, here's the same chart. It shows just last year where were students at the beginning of the year in math, MAP, and then where were they at this year in math, MAP, and how did they finish the year? And with math, you can see that every grade level was within one percent of where we were last year, or I'm sorry, was no lower than one percent of where we were last year. But we had some, such as kindergarten, where students are four percent higher, and you can kinda go down the list and see what we're, what we're looking at there. For all of our campuses, they are actually on track to maintain, and when I say maintain, we're talking about plus or minus three points of domain one. So, domain one is just an average of your approaches, meets, and masters. It's performance is what it amounts to. And so, uh, every campus, as of right now, every elementary and middle school's within three points of where they were last year or outperforming that.
And that's an improvement from last year. Last year, we did not have every campus on this list. So. Questions about that data?
Let's go back to the, um, one with the STAR in between. So, I know when we, we present this, I know it's been confusing over the last four years since we did Lone Star Governance for some, for a lot, on what MAP means and what, what, how that equates to STAR. So, the one thing we're gonna start doing is, because our Commissioner of Education has actually explained this inside of, of presentation to our regional, at our Regional Service Center, that passing, um, approaches is passing on the STAR, but it's passing at the, at the college readiness, approaching college readiness level. And so, that's what we're, we're, we're gonna start calling what, what they are. And so, approaches, meets, and masters are in the middle there, and we just kinda, on the, we bookend the actual MAP, since it's a nationally normed test. It's not what's compared to the state, it's not the end game of, of how we score. It's an actual nationally normed test as compared to all students across the nation, not just in Texas. So, you're gonna see a lot more of these as we present to y'all, because I think that's what our public can understand. It's what gets reported in the newspaper. It's what our staff understands as well. Um, so, that's kinda why we've done this.
And this was a direct response to requests by the board that we put these STAR scores in there so that you kinda knew some type of comparison of where we are and what that translated into at the end of the year.
Yeah, 'cause the paper doesn't report, I mean, they report MAP scores, but the agency doesn't. Uh, as far as our, as our end of the year grades go. Then go to that, go ahead and go to the, the, the last slide where you had, right there. I think you'll see on there that even some of our campuses that, that, uh, did not perform like we'd want them to be in this, we want all of our campuses to be a C or above, namely a seventy-five or above with that number. Um, you can see that some of them that actually, um, struggled a little bit last year are on this list, are doing well this time. So, over on the right side, you've got Hogg, and you've got, um, Clarkston, uh, and you've got Jones that have actually started this year, uh, better than they did last year as far as us being a li, being able to prognosticate and feel good about where we're at this year as, as, as we get into the testing season come spring. And then the ones on the left, they didn't have as much of a dip, um, as, as what they had last year. I guess that's what we're saying on this, the plus or minus three over here on the left. So, um, we had some pretty, pretty big valleys last year in regard to, uh, beginning of year MAP data as we were trying to prognosticate where they were gonna be, uh, for the end of the year.
Dr. Hanson, can you comment on how the implementation of the new reading program that's been recently adopted, how that's going?
Sure.
And how you think that's gonna impact these scores?
Um, well, the eternal optimist, of course. And I will tell you that, um, the proficiency of the teachers really understanding the foundational skills and being able to implement those phonemic awareness types of lessons, um, in the early grades, there's still on the phonemic awareness and, and the phonics is, it's really remarkable. They're doing a superior job. The other thing that I love about what we're doing with the teachers is their, their confidence is building, so they feel really good to be part of that feedback loop. Um, as far as giving us feedback about ways that we can thicken up the curriculum in certain areas, or increase minutes with phonemic awareness, um, minutes in, in, within the lesson. And, and that's always good, because we want our teachers to be sort of the crafters of that curriculum. So, as their confidence and capacity builds, then, then we can only get better as a system, right? So, they're really doing a great job, and the principals are leading that charge, and the campus improvement teams, I mean, the campus instructional leadership teams, they're going through that letters training and, and kinda leading that charge, uh, the implementation phase. So, it's, it's going well. I, I have high hopes. Now, the, I don't always think that those begin, those middle of the year MAP scores, as y'all know, those aren't always great indicators for us. I think that as we look at the growth at the end of the year, we'll, we will see some things that, that really translate into students being better readers.
Giving MAP a pretty good run here. How many years? Four?
I think this might be five.
This is five?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're really gonna come back and look and see if it's worthy of us to continue on with MAP. I think you do need a diagnostic, uh, but I think the state's kinda figuring that out, that on short cycle assessments that are aligned to the actual test, uh, could be something we look at in the near future. You know, their testing contract is up this year, the state's is. I think there's three companies that are bidding on that, and a part of that's gonna actually be, what do those interim assessments look like? 'Cause that's what the commissioner would really like to go to. Instead of these one-time at, at the last of the year to gauge, to see where students are, what do they look like? Kinda like what we're doing now. Beginning, middle, and end, uh, as aligned to the state's curriculum. What you see with this, with the MAP is beginning year-end, and it's not always aligned with what we're doing. Um, there's that, what do they call it? What's the national curriculum?
Common Core.
Yeah, so that's, uh, um, that is something that I think that they're on that pace, and we're not on that pace. We're not gonna be on that pace. So, in saying that, I think that's something we'll look at this year. We're gonna go through this year of the fifth year of MAP to see if it truly is a good diagnostic for us, uh, not just for us, but just for our kids and our teachers.
We do have to, we have to find something that is in compliance with House Bill 3 regardless.
Yeah.
And, um, and they're right now looking at whether NWEA is, is even part of that.
Yeah, and, and at your, at your November workshop, at your team building, we do have for you to be in compliance with House Bill 3, even though we were at the forefront and early adopter of Lone Star Governance. The House Bill 3 does have some requirements for this board to, uh, to, to adopt a literacy, a math, and a CCMR goal. Yes, we're already there, but if, if MAP is not going to be, um, in our future, we need to realign that pretty quickly. So, um, we'll talk to y'all more about that at the workshop.
Okay, any more questions or comments about the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate ya. Okay, moving on to public participation. We have one speaker, Mr. Bob Brewer. Come on down.
Thanks again, Board. Uh, this is maybe the best, uh, school board meeting I've ever been to, either Tyler or anywhere else. Uh, really hopeful. Mr. Sterling, your prayer's great. It really should be the example for every classroom in TISD. Your elementary Maya is just such the example for a perfect student. And then to have Kevin East come in here and show all the progress that he's doing is just a blessing beyond compare. So, uh, the last time I was here was for, uh, Constitution Week. Uh, we won't talk about that. I don't wanna ruin the mood. But, uh, today is, uh, the first day of early voting, and we're voting on ten amendments plus some other things depending on where you live. I'd like to let everybody know, in reference to Constitution Week, none of this is constitutional. And that might be a good test that I could leave for later, or I could explain it now. The only written guarantee in the Constitution is to guarantee a republican form of government. And when our elected representatives shirk their responsibilities on decisions that they can't make, and they give it up to the people, a democracy, which is mob rule, things just devolve to chaos. So, anyway, uh, if you need any of these ballots, I've got them marked the way some people think they oughta go, but, uh, we should avoid these at all costs. We are a republican form of government. We elect people like you to represent us, to know the issues, because we can't, and none of the people that are gonna be voting on this know anything, any better than any of our elected representatives. So, anyway, uh, something, oh. There's a move afoot that's rampant on charter schools, and we must avoid those at all cost if they don't involve elected boards like this board. It really is, uh, it's using tax money without any consequences to the, uh, it's taxation without representation. So, uh, anyway, uh, since all this is constitutional, I brought some, uh, employment applications for new people that wanna run for office. And it asks a bunch of questions on what your oath means regarding the Constitution, and if you're really gonna abide by it and know what the Constitution demands. Because in my estimation, not one person in this entire nation is following their oath to protect and defend the Constitution. And that's the second clause of Article 4, Section 4, which is provide protection against invasion, and that ain't happening. So, anyway, uh, it's good to see we got the National Merit Scholar. Seems like we had a boatload back in sixty-seven. I'm not sure what level of, um, National Merit Scholar that was, but, uh, anyway, whatever you can do to help Kevin and help get our Bible back into pre-K to post-doc would be much appreciated, as a reminder, as I spoke last time. In seventeen eighty-three, the Confederation Congress, right after the signing of the treaty with England, commissioned the printing of ten thousand books to be used in schools. Those books were the Akin Bible. Twenty-five percent of that Congress went on to sign the Constitution. Two of those guys went on to be Supreme Court justices. One of them was a chief justice. If it's legal to have the Bible throughout education, for them, there's no reason why it shouldn't be for us. And thank you again for your prayer, and keep it up, and, uh, please help Kevin all you can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer. Uh, we are now going on to the business legal finance consent agenda. Uh, we are going to pull item B, which is approval of gifts and donations. Aside from item B, uh, are there any others that we'd like to pull before I consider a motion for items A through G with the exception of B? Okay?
Mr. President, I propose a, I move that we approve A through G less B.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Eyes have it. Motion passes seven oh. Uh, okay, gifts and donations is item B. What do we have, Dr. Crawford?
The RW Fair Foundation donated ten thousand dollars to Tyler ISD Athletics. And while we have a lot of donations that go to our athletic programs, I could not be more proud to offer this to the board for action tonight. Because we've been having an issue with, uh, Little Dribblers basketball and volleyball. We just instituted punt, pass, and kick for, for our kiddos, and the Fair Foundation has donated that money to make sure that our kids have an opportunity at Little League basketball, Little Dribbler basketball, and, um, uh, volleyball as well. We're running our own league, and so, uh, we, we haven't really talked much about that, but, um, that's been a big project that Coach Priest and the Athletic Department are working, uh, on, and, uh, Coach Gillespie and, and Coach Little, his assistant athletic directors, have put this league together. Um, they actually sent out the, uh, the registration email, uh, last week. I think flyers are going out this week amongst our, amongst all of our campuses. Our dreams are that the seventeen elementary schools that we have, um, in grades three through five, three, four, five, actually in fifth and sixth, sixth grade as well, um, have opportunities, uh, to, 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 to learn basketball at a young age. This is, it's, it's all gone to AAU and select and club. And if y'all are asking us to compete, um, at the high school level, um, the kids that come from more challenging backgrounds economically need to have access to gyms and basketballs and good people coaching them. And I think that we're gonna be able to kinda do an old-school East Texas thing here, is our vision. So, spend a little bit too much time on the RW Fair Foundation's donation, but that is an awesome start. I hope our community can get back, uh, get behind this. And our vision is that we carry this into baseball and softball eventually.
Sounds exciting. I do have one, just clarifying question without delving too far into, is this, is this like replacing Little Dribblers?
No.
Or is it aside from? Okay.
Not aside from.
Okay.
And, um, like I said, la, you know, last year, we have an issue, uh, and it's not just a Tyler thing, it's across the state, it's across the nation to where club and AAU has taken over a lot of this, and that's fine. They can have those. But, uh, what happens to the kids that can't afford those types of things, or, um, don't have the, the, the commitment level or the interest level in that? I think that's where we're really struggling there. So, no, we're not replacing Little Dribblers. It's an, it's a Tyler ISD league. You're more than welcome to go play in. I think my own kids are gonna probably play in this league and another one as well. But, uh, really started bothering me last year when we couldn't put a, a Tyler ISD team together, a Tyler team together in Tyler for Little Dribblers, and we had to go play in Bullard and Whitehouse. Uh, we've got, I don't know, six thousand elementary-age kids in Tyler ISD. You can't tell me you can't find enough teams just to have basketball in your own, in your own city. Um, so, it's, it's, it's a pretty large project. Um, we've got the facilities to do it. We need to find good people that's in our communities to, uh, to, to lead these young women and, and young men, uh, to play. Shouldn't say Little Dribblers, that's kinda trademarked. Young people's basketball. There you go. Youth basketball. There you go.
Well, that is an awesome gift. That's an awesome donation the Fair Foundation made. Uh, I'll take a motion to accept that donation. I move we approve the donation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, and that will do it for the Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. Now we're going on to Curriculum Instruction. Does anybody want to pull anything? Items A through F? Or do I have a motion to approve Items A through F?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The eyes have it, motion carries seven oh. Superintendent Staff Reports. First off, we have our yearly high school voter registration update.
Yeah, approaching the microphone is John Landis. Mr. Landis is responsible for kind of managing this process. Y'all remember a few years ago, we had some local people that took it upon themselves to try to rally the, the high school vote, when it's actually via the Secretary of State in statute, it's the responsibility of the school system and high school principals to do so. So Mr. Landis is the point person at the high, or excuse me, at the central office level. He's here to give you the fall twenty nineteen high school voter registration data, and then we'll have another one of these in the spring. Mr. Landis?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford and Board. Mr. Sterling, good to see you. This is my first time with you on the Board, so welcome. Glad you're on it. This is the fall twenty nineteen high school voter registration data. So I'm going to run, walk through, here's the Texas Election Code, just to refresh each semester. We are allowed, and it's by law, that each principal or, of a public or private high school can, either they themselves or have a designee serve as a deputy registrar. So they don't actually have to have the process of being deputized, they are by default by Texas statute. So each semester of each, at least twice a school year, once a semester, we are required to at least give the opportunity for an eighteen-year-old that has not registered yet in that semester's election. So what we do is, this, this November election is November fifth, so thirty days before is the last day to register to vote, so a couple weeks ago. But you are now allowed to, if you turn eighteen on Election Day or during that thirty-day gap, you can actually register to vote. So you could still be seventeen and three hundred and forty days old and register to vote and vote in that coming election. So that's the numbers, that's the kids we're trying to capture each, each semester. So this semester, this fall, John Tyler, we had twenty, Robbery Lee, thirty, CTC, which of course is JT and early students, a mix of that is about forty-five. And then our early college, RISE and DAEP was right at about fifteen total for those three as one. So that's, that is, it is lower than our usual than last fall, but you know, I don't want to make excuses, but last fall, there was a, that one big Texas Senate election, if we recall, and so a little bit different this fall. So that's kind of, so I guess that's about, I think it's about one-ten total across our campuses. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I believe it is your civic responsibility to vote. I would love to see the numbers higher. I, I, I do know that you're not to tell a stu, tell a student how to vote, but teach why you vote, the voting process. And I, I would really love to see those numbers higher than what we have.
Yep.
Because I believe it's your responsibility to vote.
Yep.
Vote and serve on the jury. But we have to teach it.
Yes, ma'am. And once, and once I got this data back, there's, there's definitely, you know, I can take this on the chin, and there's, there's ways I can be, be more proactive and more involved in this coming spring, so.
I hope so.
We'll, we'll make sure and get our kids signed up if, if they want to. It's still an option, but we'll make sure and they have plenty of chances. So no, no excuses not to unless they just decide they do not want to.
It might help to have some context. We don't know how many, I mean, do you know how many eighteen-year-olds are eligible to?
Right.
Well, the fall's going to be a little bit lighter than the spring, just because of the natural, most kids turn, I mean, it's not going to be half of it. I think that you're going to wind up, because you only have two months of our school year for this to happen, so I think in the spring, you're going to be able to collect quite a few more. Do you have to do it before the primary? Is that, how's that going to, I guess it doesn't really matter, it's, it's Election Day in May.
Right, it's just that election date.
Yeah, so I think you'll see these numbers higher in the spring, just because you'll be able to collect more, you know, more kids. We're, we're seven months away from, from that, I guess, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, and one of our, one of our high schools, the designee even, you know, told me, said, hey, we're, I had way more kids than normal from this summer to now, already show up on my roll of, you know, who to offer the chance to that already registered. So I don't know if that's, they're just taking the initiative, or if that's maybe, I don't know, if you turn eighteen, if you have to renew anything on your driver's license or...
You do, you lose your probationary license and you pick up a new one, you have to get a new driver's license and...
So I think you can, you can, you can register then, so. So that, you know, that, that's not, you know, a three hundred kid difference, but it, I think it did make a, a little bit of an impact, so.
Do you have, do you have the data showing who is eligible, like, and then like twenty kids out of these eligible kids? Did it, I mean, as a...
I do, not, not with me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But yeah, I do, I do have that, yes.
Okay. That might, yeah, that might help, just to show context, because we, you know, we don't know if there's just forty kids, fifty or a hundred, two hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's my bet.
But anyway, okay.
Is it taught in the government classes?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
The voting process?
I know at Lee, oh, well, the actual teaching about the process and the importance of it.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, I, I would certainly think so and, and assume so. I, I don't know if you're talking about the actual, when they give them the chances. I know for sure the designee at Lee is, is one of our social studies teachers who's been there a long time and, and kind of got the rhythm down to, to how to do it, so. I can't speak to exactly, you know, which class period or, or, or who made sure at the other campuses, but, yes, ma'am.
Unlike some folks that don't think we do anything in teaching property rights and constitutional rights and other things, that process is started very early, starting in kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade where it crescendos into a government class. So yes, ma'am, that we, we teach voting and how important it is for twelve, thirteen years of a, of a, of a student's career. When they get to their senior year, absolutely, the government curricula does have voting inside of it. One issue that we do have on that is only half of our kids are taking government at this time, and the other half will take government in the spring semester as well. So, but it is run through all of our social studies, our social studies departments at the high schools. They're able to, in their department meetings and plan for the appropriate proctoring of putting those cards in front of those students and getting those things returned back into them. So that's kind of a, a simple process. So, yeah.
So, so instead of someone going to the campuses, like at the college level, you have deputized registrars who could go and register students to vote. You can't do that at the high school level. It has to be someone there on campus who is deputized.
Who, you talking about from the county going to register folks?
No, community.
Well, the reason they've done this is for the, for the principals to be able to do that. I'm going to be honest with you, Reverend Mason, we've tried to keep this as nonpartisan as possible because we did have some pretty partisan folks that were trying to manage this on their own.
Oh, really?
That's why we took this on ourselves. We, we, we got, put in the Dallas Morning News of some nasty pink dot that we weren't doing our job, and it was, it wasn't accurate. And I think we weren't doing our job based upon what they wanted. So in saying that, we do our own stuff here, we just need to do a better job of that with our high school principals, and I'll, I'll handle that.
I don't want us to get into party polit, politics, but I do believe it's very important that students understand.
Absolutely.
Why you vote.
Absolutely.
And understand the voting process.
Yep.
And that is a part of being an actively engaged citizen.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landis.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Okay, coming up next, we have a class size update.
Yeah, page seventy-nine of your packet, if you want to go to that. We have, we kind of gave a little bit of an update, I think in September, a kind of a preview of where we're at. Because we are a district of innovation, we do not apply to the state for a waiver anymore on class sizes. We actually handle that at the local level. And in your packet is the actual, the amount of waivers that are actually, the class sizes where we actually have more than a twenty-two to one. We have thirty-four classes that are over by a total of fifty-five students. That's pretty tightly budgeted, in my opinion, in regard to that. It's not like we've got hundreds of students that are causing us to tip over on this. So thirty-four classes, district-wide, it's a total of fifty-five students. Any questions? We've got Tasha Bjork that can answer some of that, if you need to ask a question, or I can help as well. But we do report it based on our district of innovation.
Okay. Moving on, we have our quarterly investment report.
Tasha, how are the investments? Can you pick up the microphone, please?
We're at, we have two and a quarter percent on our in, return on interest, so we're doing well still.
If you have any questions about the quarterly investment report, you're more than welcome to contact my office or contact Tasha Bjork's office directly.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Are these required to be reported?
Yes, sir.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. We don't have to make as big a deal about it at the DIAS if you don't want us to. We can just say, hey, if you got any questions, you can just contact us.
Just can't recall a question in my twenty years of being on the Board that anyone's had over the quarterly investing, so.
And you'd think somebody like, in your line of work, you'd kind of really be into something like that. Maybe, no?
Well, we get so much data to review beforehand, I think we were, all review it and are very well familiar with it by the time we get to the DIAS.
Yeah, this is statutorily required to be presented to the Board of Trustees quarterly.
Important stuff, thank you.
Okay, moving on to future business. We have a November fifth workshop, a November eighteenth regular meeting. Anything on top of that?
That's all we've got. Team building is the November fourth, excuse me, November fifth workshop.
Our team of great workshop.
Too late.
All right, eight is great. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion carries.